Not enough to slow it down. Good.
I don't think.
All right. Join them in the flag list, please. Page two, eight.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone. Welcome to the Bourbon County Commission Meeting. For approval minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from fifteenth February.
Check it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Bailey, you're up, sir.
All right. First, we got a approval for a culvert extension that we've completed for Russell Fell at 2431 Jayhawk.
He built quite a house there, didn't he?
Yes, he did. House and barn and everything.
Nice barn.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Not a whole lot here this morning, but kind of give you an update. The bridge at 130th and Birch, I showed you last time. We've got the outer stringer back in place and welded in place and secured. Concrete decking has been put back in and then the wing wall we've concreted over that. And now we're working on getting guardrail put back up. So as soon as Mother Nature will cooperate with us, we'll get that.
Looked pretty good. I was down there yesterday.
Yeah.
Looked good.
Yeah.
It's always amazing how they built that at angle.
At an angle. I don't understand.
Anyway, thank you.
Yeah. So again, calling for storms again this week. We'll see what happens. Anywhere from a trace to four inches is what they're predicting. So we made it through last week, so we'll hit it again this week and see where we're at. Material wise, we're holding up just fine on our material.
Get your trucks back in?
We do. That's what I was gonna... We did get 145 back last week.
Good.
So we were able to run with four trucks and we're on our way up this morning to get 146. So we will have five trucks.
You won't know what to do.
It probably won't snow, but we'll have five trucks. So anyhow, that is a plus there. On a sad moment, we lost a past employee this... Over the weekend or what have you, there'll be several of us attending the funeral tomorrow. So just wanted to let you know. Landfill's gonna go ahead and stay open, but there will be several Public Works employees attend.
Pretty good person.
Yes, he was. Great man, so... And then Windmills met with Jeff Spangler last Tuesday after the commission meeting and we went around and looked at some areas that IEA is continuing to work on. And they're doing a great job and we're getting down to the final where we'll be doing a final punch list here before long. So just kind of want to give you an update on that and let you know where we're at.
Okay.
So other than that, that's about all I have. Do you have anything for me?
No. Thanks for looking. Those couple items I gave you.
Yep.
I appreciate it. Bridge you guys are working on, we went down there yesterday, putting out feeding for turkeys.
Yep.
I don't know if that's legal, say that or not.
I think so, but...
We feeding pets.
Yes, yes, yes.
It's not season.
It's not about that time.
It's not season, so it's probably legal.
That's right. Right.
So I don't have anything.
I had a request to clear...
Sidearm?
Sidearm. Mo. What's up by the cemetery towards the south of the dump? Instead of taking the curb north down over the hill, it's a...
Cemetery, okay.
This cemetery?
Yep, right up here.
Old Grove.
And go which way from it?
Well...
Where the cemetery's at?
There are curves.
Right?
To the north.
To the north, okay.
Instead of going north, go down the gravel road. It looks like a driveway kind of.
Gotcha.
But it is a county road.
Yep, it is, yep.
If you could sidearm that.
Yep.
I guess it's gotten pretty bad. They can't get their trucks and stuff into that.
Yep.
I mean, they can, it's just combines and stuff scratching.
Right, yep. Nope, we will get that.
Does it take long for that stuff to grow over?
No, it doesn't. Anything else?
How's the sidearm more holding up?
We're having more issues with the tires than... Or with the wheels themselves stripping out. And I think it's on the ang... The side angle. We're having some issues with that, but we're trying to see what we can't figure out. But other than that, they're... You know, when you're cutting hedge and what have you, six inches or four inches, it's hard on them, but it's...
We got a little bit of hedge in Bourbon County.
We got a little bit.
A little bit.
That's good, hard Bourbon County hedge, so...
Yeah.
They're taking some wear and tear and a little bit of abuse on them, but we're trying to keep them up and running the best we can and keep somebody in them and moving right along.
Have you thought about bidding dumb trucks or waiting until our equipment meeting?
I thought we'd wait till our equipment meeting and see where we're at and what have you. Make sure we're all on the same page.
Got the list together?
There's a list.
That's what I heard.
There is a list, but...
Probably a big list.
There is a list, so anyhow.
Okay. Thank you, Eric.
All right.
Have a good day.
Yep.
Cerulean Mulberry Permit Approval.
Yep, we have two of them. It's for 946 Highway 69. It's the one at the ham and the station up at the ham. There's an on premises and an off premises.
Same, both of them same location?
Same location.
Okay. I have a request for a license permit for liquor, Bourbon County, for the location of 946 Highway 69, must be the convenience store. I'll make a motion to approve that.
Check it.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Discussion of removal of special assessment process from the county clerk.
Hey, Justin? I'm not sure where Matt was.
He was here.
We... I know the appraiser's office usually does abatements, but our office does the special assessments. And so therefore, we have in the past removed assessments. Janet said their office has never done it. Patty says their office has never done it. I know we put them on, so when I first was appointed, I talked to Justin about it. I talked to Matt's office. They said that it was okay for our office to do it, so I just want to make sure I have one. We only take them off if the city sends us a letter asking us to remove those. I just want to make sure that's the process.
Define what a special assessment is.
Like a mowing assessments, like the city mowed for a property that was not kept up.
So she does her, she calls the chairman to help?
Why?
She's just automatic process?
Well, I put it in the system and then it would have to be... Normally, like the appraiser's office does it. I would do it for a special assessment, then you would sign off on it, and then I approve it in the system, and then it goes to Patty. So there's still a process.
Just like this, a special assessment for the city, though?
Well, the city or any city, Bronson, Union Town, Redfield, whoever puts a mowing or demo or cleanup or throwing that.
So it takes the commission's hold or the chairman can do it?
Chairman can do it.
Okay. Very good.
Because really, what's... What it happened, it's coming from the municipal board is where it's coming from. It's their assessment. We have nothing to do with it.
We have nothing to do with it, say, okay.
Right.
They send them once a year. We have to have them by the end of August. We put them all on once a year, but then...
Well, theoretically...
Two of the year, I don't know what the process is, but they'll ask us to take certain ones off.
Well, theoretically, like with the land bank, if, you know, in the future, if someone decides to deed over that property directly to the land bank instead of going through the tax sale, it has special assessments on it. The city can waive those assessments, so it could trickle through through the year.
Okay. Good, man. Well, that's good that we know the process. Thank you. Okay, moving right along. County Councilor comments.
Good morning, commissioners. I just want a quick update. We're working on... We've got a whole bunch of the new tax sales properties uploaded in the system this weekend. I did give Ms. Holdridge, she's been awesome with the information that she needs to complete the deeds for the last sale, so we should have those done this week and after the people that purchase those properties. We're about a week and a half, two weeks behind on what my goal was, obviously being an arbitrary goal, but I was hoping to have them done a little bit sooner, but we have some different dates for the day of the actual order for sale. So we're progressing with the new sale. We're gonna be giving... The demand letters will probably be going out here for the sale in September. Probably those demand letters will be going out pretty soon, hopefully after spring break probably, and then we'll get those abstracts to the title company and pull the 2017. So been working. I've got the revised... Some revised contracts from local helps, too, that I'll be talking to the chairman about this week sometime, probably to go over those and click the red lines. I don't think there's anything dramatic. We just need to take a look at those a little bit. I know some other things happening in the background on that, though we'll have to maybe wait a little bit on for that, but those did come in a week and a half ago, so...
I have a question. In the past, you mentioned the possibility of the county workman, private investors, an elk creek. Is that still something that's...
That would be... You know, we've had a little background on that. We've been approached... I'm shutting my eyes to kind of remember those conversations. Five or six years ago, we were approached by some people that were very interested in running kind of like Airbnb or, you know, fixing up the cabins out there and, you know, having them manage it and having a private partnership, private public partnership. You know, with the money as tight as it is, that would... I think it's a really good idea to have that happen and be simple contracts, you know?
Yeah.
Basically, a management company helping us run those. Those cabins would be amazing to rent.
Yeah, they're nice. The kids be... In general, they are, but they need some little maintenance, but they can...
Yeah, I mean, the main lodge needs a lot of work. Some of them, actually, there's one on the east side of the lake that the roof's starting to fail, so...
A lot of rock work to do on the one on the west side, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the main lodge is beautiful, but it needs a lot of rock work.
Yep, it is. It appears to need to be redone.
Yeah.
So with the one, the roof fell and, I mean, we have the money in that one account, 10,000 we put back. Are we gonna fix that roof before it causes more problems or have you...
That's completely... I mean, I don't know who the... I mean, those... All the roofs out there have problems. The one on the, I guess, would be the southeast, the first one, as you come in from 39 or coming off that. That one, the roof is actually peeling off on the one corner. And that, the last time we looked at it was probably before Thanksgiving, so it was leaking through.
Probably need to get that fixed.
Yeah, that's something we probably ought to start doing, one building at a time, at least to make sure the roofs are good.
But a private-public partnership, I mean, I think you could really do some amazing thing out there.
Is that still on the table?
I can find out.
That's something I would request the commission to work with Eric or have Eric to start working on, better repairing that roof.
Each building has its own roof issue.
Right.
10,000, if you did 10,000 a year, it would take seven years to get them all done, eight years.
Yeah.
For me, a private-public partnership would be getting a way to get some income generated from those for rentals. I mean, right now, a good Airbnb, and I'm not using that specifically, I just... Those types of engines, I mean, you can easily get 140, 150 a night for those.
I think private investors...
Right. We're in the form of, you know, a long-term contractual relationship, because there's gonna be some investment on the front end that's probably gonna be pretty substantial. I can make those phone calls again.
In that form, we ought to start looking at roof at a time until... I'd recommend that, anyway.
Just another quick... Shane Walker did a lot of work on this. Those aren't the BP buildings.
Right.
They're historical, so there'd have to be some return it back to... I mean, I know there's some metal roof pieces on some of them, and some of them have their original roof, so we'd have to try to do our best to return it back to the historical period of...
Was there any grant money available then for...
Yeah, HPA grant money.
They're not on the historical side.
They're not registered.
They're not registered.
Shane went down that...
The question is, would we... Do we, I mean...
Do we want to?
Do you want to register them, because then you get all the...
A few days is gonna cost you a lot more money.
You have all the red tape to go through.
Well, you have to return them... You have to return them back to what they were.
Were back in 1930s.
Right. And the pier on the main lodge, wow, I mean, I would assume it'd be a million dollars probably for what that used to look like. Pictures of that thing were pretty awesome, but there was a beach, a long pier, I mean, they had a lot of stuff out there and all that stuff.
I just... I would say if we're considering a public-private thing with that, I mean, if you make phone calls, and I know you know this, but I'm just saying it so the public hears it, phone calls you make would not be necessarily the people that we would...
No, I understand.
...choose. This would be... Had to have to be a bid it out process.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Open bid, the whole thing. Yeah, I'm saying, I mean, if there's no point in doing it...
No, I'm just saying, right, right. But I just want...
Yeah. Times have changed dramatically from...
Want the other people, the public, the paper to know that...
Right.
We're not... You're not just reaching out to certain persons to do this.
Yeah, thank you for that. Clarification, everything would go out for bid. We'd have an open... Hopefully, we'd get four or five people that'd be interested in it, but...
Yeah.
I gotta find out. There's a lot of homework to do.
Okay.
Because I know some of the buildings are, I mean, especially the lodge and then the one on the...
South.
South.
Southeast.
Well, yeah, that one's bad, but the other one across the... He was talking about the one on the opposite side. It needs a lot of work, too. We have water, we have water, you know, issues, electrical and...
Okay.
Tuck 40.
Yeah.
All kinds of tuck 40.
I mean, they're beautiful structures, but it's...
Only way to save them is get started.
Yeah, right. Good point. Try that.
Okay, thank you. That it for you, Justin?
That's it.
You all done? Thank you. Susan Van Graal, Finance Director, comments. Said something.
She said, yeah, I think, basically, hold on.
Okay.
Patient, you know, patience.
I have a lot of them.
I think Ashley wanted to talk about the implement weather portion, and then I'm gonna get a contract that I need to get real quick.
I just want to ask, I know we have a calling tree for if the courthouse is closed, but we had some bad weather. We did not close the courthouse. I'm not saying I want to close one way or the other. I just want to make sure everyone knows, because people are asking me, are we gonna be closed? They want to know what the process is. So when I talked to Jim, he felt like it was kind of up to the department heads. I just want to kind of discuss that so everyone knows. The courthouse could be open. David is always here. Dorrit is usually here. I'm usually here. So the courthouse itself would be open.
Right. Well, the first one, we did close down. The second storm, I didn't think it was as bad as the first one, so, you know, if we...
And I'm not arguing your decision.
I know that, yeah.
I just know there's more weather coming, so I just want to... For people that were asking me questions, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page and have the same...
In my process, I contact Eric and Shane. We had a conference call. We talk a lot, what the roads are like, what they could be like at closing time. So that's how we kind of... I take recommendation and I talk to Ashley, so it's not just I make the decision. I get a lot of input from people and try to make the right decision on safety. So I like that call list. That way, we know everybody's contacted. I know we had people show up that nobody was here.
If the actual courthouse is closed, we do have a calling tree. I've sent to all the department heads that I would notify certain people. They would reach out and notify people. If the courthouse is open and there are offices that are going to be closed, they just don't have people that can get here, whatever that elected official's decision is, they would just let us know. We... That way, we know, because our office gets all the calls. I mean, we're kind of the operator for the courthouse. That way, we could say we're closed. I know we've had an incident before where an office was closed. It wasn't due to weather, it was due to illness, but that way, when people call, we can put something on Facebook. So is that okay to... For us to kind of be the call center if an office is gonna be closed due to weather when the courthouse is open, that we can notify, put it on Facebook or...
Yeah. And if the courthouse is open, each employee can make that decision on their safety.
Right.
Or their personal and take a day of vacation.
There you go.
I mean, and I had that in my office. I had someone take it the day, but we're still open.
There have to be here.
You're... I would say that you individually are responsible for your own health.
Yeah.
And your own safety. If the roads are too safe to come to work, don't come to work.
Yeah.
Whether this place is open or closed.
Well, and that's... I mean, we...
You know, I mean, I mean, that's how I look at my own job or whatever. My family and my safety is my first priority, plain and simple.
And I'm just thinking about how to notify the public of the closings. I mean, that's kind of my concern is what the protocol is to let people know of the situation.
Well, I think you have in your system, you put it on Facebook and someone calls the radio station and tells them we're closed, so I think with the system, you're working with really well, really good.
So we'll kind of follow the same thing and we'll just put the courthouse is open, but these offices may be closed or whatever the case may be.
Yeah, courthouse is open, you know, we're not sure which office is gonna be open, but we're open for business. Come see us if you think the roads are okay. So it's your choice, but...
Okay, I just want to make sure that was okay process to follow, so we can... I'll send an email out to department heads. That way, everyone's on the same page.
And I liked the two days we closed. Eric and Shane both advised me, don't get those people on those roads if you can. So that's how I make my decision to help advise some good people.
So, yep.
So I don't... Again, I just don't make it.
No.
We get a conference call and...
I know there's more people than you involve, but you're the person I hear from, so that's why...
Yeah, I understand that thing. And I really trust Eric and Shane, so... Okay, thank you. I like the call list, though. It's a good deal.
So I don't forget people?
Yeah.
So we have heard back from the state and they did not like the contract that we had with the appraiser. So we've fixed that and we've done a new resolution. And so I just... I have the old resolution and the new one. The dates change a little bit, but the... They wanted a certain format and there was one year more than what they could approve. And so it changes from 2026 to 2025, so in 2025, you'll have to renew this. So I just want to pass this around and it's a new resolution. We need to get to the state as soon as possible.
Can you tell us the changes?
Basically, the only thing it changed are the dates.
Date.
Yeah. And they... It's... We couldn't have it effective a certain date. It had to be effective January 31st, probably based on certification, I would assume.
I assume it's all fine with you, Matt, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he's looked it over.
Appraiser contract's running through June 30th, and that's... So that's what we just have to change today, not at the end of the year, so...
Everything else remained the same, the salary, everything else.
I make a motion to accept the changed resolution for the appraiser's contract. This is 32-21.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
The next item that I have is, I've been working real closely with the treasurer and the clerk on various items, but one of the things that we have identified is in the treasurer's office, it's really hard for Patty to not have a lot of interruptions where she's at. And so we have that control room just right off of her office, and we're asking that we allow for her to move into that. And basically, she would have some privacy so that she can concentrate a little bit better, because she does have a lot of interruptions throughout the day. So that's a request, since it's the commissioner's duty to assign that. She was... She's asking for that control room, if she could move into there.
Do we use it, anything else now?
No. We had planned on using it for when the city moved over, but since that's not going to happen, we just feel like it's a good use. I think we've already done the flooring in there, and so really, we would just have to get with Shane to move her computer and do some wiring. You guys good with that?
Aye.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good idea.
Perfect. Finance reports, I was hoping to have them. As I was working on them over the weekend, I found a few entries that need to be corrected, and so I'm gonna make those. And so next week, we should have final reports. I'm double checking, like, interest against what banks are showing, as well as state payments, and that's where I found some errors, was in the state payments. And so Patty and I are working on those. So I should have that to you next week.
Thank you. Going rather fast this morning. Public comment. Morning, Ann.
Good morning, good morning. Just a couple of things. I've heard some chatter about the new parking lot, and I guess if someone could speak to the justification for the parking lot. I mean, why do you need it? Why is it necessary? Why, you know, I hear comments like, I drive by the courthouse and the parking lot's never... The one we have is never full, blah, 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 blah. So if somebody wants to comment to that, and then...
And also talk about the cost, because I think there's some misconception about pay for me and...
Sure.[1571.22]
So basically it's the property that the land bank currently owns rights to the west of the, I call it the SRS building. It's the old county attorney's building. It's where Jarvis License Bureau is, the probation office and Spider is. And so the CEO of Spider about a month ago, a couple of weeks ago, made a presentation to the city of Fort Scott. They're on rapid growth mode to the point of going from X amount to hopefully a billion dollar company. And so they're currently in that building, some additional parking. They have a lot of room to grow. People that haven't been in that building, there's actually, it's two floors. There's a huge basement area and then there's a conference room and multiple offices and they're using that at this time. So with that house that was going to be torn down by the city, we're opening negotiations with them. That, that board I think has met now, so we'll follow up with Rob.
I need to kind of talk through that with you. The board did meet and Jim was there. And then after I left, we found out some more information. They have to advertise all property for 30 days. And so that grant that we're applying for is due the 28th. And I can continue to go ahead and apply for that grant contingent on us getting that property. But as of today, we will not own it. I think it was a good conversation with the land bank and it definitely falls in their priorities.
Gets rid of a dilapidated house. You know, some of the things we talked about is maybe putting some basketball goals, you know, some things out there for a neighborhood, you know, almost like a neighborhood play area when they're not using it as a parking lot.
Yeah, and the land bank, we had a good discussion regarding this property and of course the city commission that was represented there. And we talked about if they tear it down, it's going to be a dirt lot. If we can utilize it, make it a nice parking lot, it will help a good old age, it will help businesses. I mean, there's so many things, but it's, it's already been under the condemnation process. It's coming down, right? It's just a matter of what happens, if it's dirt or concrete or pavement or something, so.
I think the only cost to S would be if there's a clear title.
Of the parking on the west side of the street.
Well, that doesn't cost us.
Right.
Which will alleviate all those problems.
Yeah. And, you know, Susan brought something up, if there's a title issue, we can take care of that. I mean, that's my job function, so we can go through, there could be some publication fees, but legal fees would be just my salary, so.
So I think, so Anne, it sounds like, um, to answer your question, why we need it, um, I'm not sure through all of that, you've got that answer.
I was trying to.
I mean, it was, there was a lot of information there that didn't really.
The answer is, is we need it for additional parking for Spider.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the fact that it is an old building that we can turn into something and put, you know, I mean, I, I remember the conversations of throwing up a basketball
court or throwing up a tennis where the, a kid can hit, you know, tennis ball like they have at the high school, like a, just a plywood wool type thing. Something also in it at night that, that kids could use it.
Or the weekend or.
You know, that's just a, that's neither here nor there and that it costs very much. But cost would be our labor.
So I guess my next question would be, why is it our responsibility to provide Spider parking?
Well, that building, it's not, but that building actually is going to be long-term. That's our incubator.
Okay.
So because of the incubator system, we have it set up. I mean, Spider's the perfect example of what that incubator system could do.
They just happen to be the one that's there now.
Right.
Okay.
And for, to apply for this grant, we have to identify the businesses that are in there and the, that grant specific is for expansion of business. And so that's why they were named in, in our conversation.
Yeah, and it's hopefully, after Spider leaves, we'll have another business ready to go. Right after that, we hope, because that's what we're hoping to do is grow businesses.
It's just an economic development thing.
Yeah.
That, that really doesn't cost us a bunch of money, labor. I mean, there's material costs.
Right, but we make the, we make the chips and we.
And what are those, what are those numbers looking like? Do we know?
Well, we, we make, we make the, we make the chip and seal. We make all the product that would be needed. We're hopefully going to be the ones tearing it down to save taxpayer money and, you know, recycling the material and putting it in the land. I mean, it's just, it makes sense.
Roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the project.
What'd she say?
Hundred and fifty thousand for the project, approximately.
We're doing curving gutter driveways, I mean.
How much?
Hundred and fifty. But remember that's, that's only a big grant.
Okay.
Comes through.
Yeah.
We'll have to use a contractor and that's contractor type work.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm probably not going to vote for that if that grant doesn't come through. I'll just say that in public right now.
And I'll second that publicly.
Okay.
We might share some gravel or something, but.
Okay, okay. Gosh, probably for eight, nine months, just being myself, being more aware. And I don't know if this is the proper place, but there is a concern that I have when I get there. When Spark grants first became available, and I don't think you two were on the, on the commission yet, that was before your time. Of course, I don't, didn't understand a lot of that. But then being more aware, as time went on, being more aware of our school districts and the college. And when it comes to Spark funds, the USDA, USD gets ESER funds and that's kind of a topic right now and they're having public meetings on that. And then ARPA funds and all of that, I guess I became a little, I, I, well, just frustrated mainly that when I began to look at what USD gets in ESER funds and then them at one point turning around and coming and asking the county for Spark funds for added monies. And I don't, and at that time, the college doing the same thing. But they can all also apply and receive Spark funds or funds tied to COVID money. The school district has all kinds of things, the CARES Act, which I think we, we had that too, and something called CRSSA. But specifically, I do not know what the junior colleges' numbers are. But I do know with just ESER funds that you're looking at total, all total, including the ESER three funds, that would be four, five, six, about six to seven million dollars that USD is going to receive on their own. And so wanting you all, encourage, wanting to encourage you all to be as fiscally responsible as you can with ARPA, Spark, whatever else they want to, acronym they want to bring up and tack on there when these other entities come and ask the county for more funds. And there are limits to what, there are limits and guidelines, yes, what they can spend their money on and, and I understand that as well. But just wanting to, just speak to that a little bit, just to have, I, my eyes were not. Yeah. If you would like, yeah, Susan.
I really think it's about timing. The Spark funds were like the first funds that were released for COVID. And then later on, we had all these other funds that started coming out. And so at the time when it happened, it was really to mitigate safe environments. And so like the college, I think they used a lot of their funding to create dorm space for, um, what do I want to say? When people had COVID, they could isolate. So that was a lot of theirs. And then the school districts was more for like masks and things like that, extra janitorial services, cleaning. And so I think the intent of those Sparks funds was used correctly at the time that it would happen because it was the only thing available. So, and yes, they do have a lot more money coming down to them than, but I think, I don't think our plan is, we haven't had any requests from the educational facilities as of today for any of the funding that the county's receiving.
Thank you. Anything else, Anne? Matt, comment, questions? Happy to be here. You like mayors, have to be somewhere, aren't you? Well, elected official comment.
It's me just dragging on.
They never come visit, do they? How about a five minute break? That'd work.
Works for me. He's right. When those guidelines came down, they were pushing heavily on education for, for the Sparks grants at that time.
Get that video, let's, I'll see it.
My son kept saying, do you need to get someone to my school? I said, no, just shut the door and leave me here.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that's, I don't remember the glasses. Just kidding.
Yeah.
Education was big, but. It was a convoluted mess. Well, it's just because they threw it out there and they developed guidelines, lines in the way.
And Monica would come. Yes.
You know, then the guidelines, we're doing the same thing as ARPA, you know, of course, we're not from spinning out. That might just simply make it a more budget.
Yes.
But, you know, the, the, the rules change every day.
Yeah, well, and that's what, I remember saying about the Spark and everything as well.
Anyway.
Yeah.
Hey, you going to lunch today, Mary?
I'm supposed to tell you, I give, well, it's just not certain people.
Understand that. Well, he's going to show up at my place at noon. Where Susan.
What?
Mary's meeting in my office at noon because that's where Susan and I are going to be. Me, you and Susan and Mary.
We're keeping you busy?
Yeah, about 20 different things going on between the. Between reservations, lumber, hospital.
Being pulled in a lot of directions.
Yeah. Yep.
How was training?
Having been here.
Having been here.
No. Second to March.
Oh. Coming up quickly.
Yes.
Okay, go back into, uh, Bill, I just called elected official comment. You got anything going busy about or anything? Everybody's being easy on us. Commission comments?
I have a comment.
Okay, good.
Now I gotta remember what it was. No, it's, it's about closing the courthouse. Been through this process quite a little bit. You know, and I know it justified to be closed sometimes. But when you look at the overall scope of, of who has to show up to work, the biggest, largest part of our workforce is going to be here and we're going to pay time and a half.
Oh, yeah.
Now, I, I do, I do think it's a great idea and we've done it before is if, if the department heads don't think that they can make it in, I think that's the way we should go.
I agree.
You know, because I'm always, unless it's just an absolute shutdown, but I, I can tell you that both days my wife got up and drove seven and a half miles, well, no, she drove 11 miles to make sure that the daycare was open.
Yeah.
You know, and of course I had to feel fat and respect. But, you know, safety is first for, for the families. Let's leave it up to the department heads.
Yeah, each department head, like Cliff mentioned, can be charged with their own personal safety. But, you know, as being a public works director for so many years, you make a lot of calls that's borderline, but you try to go toward the side of safety and sometimes there's just no good call.
Yeah. I always kind of judge it, if I can make it up the old hill south of me and with a two-wheel drive pickup, anybody can drive.
Yeah, I, I will say that that day, I, I went to Pittsburgh. The day there was an inch of ice at my house. I get south of Fort Scott and there's not.
Right.
So our weather is different across our county, I think. Sheriff Martin could, those guys could attest to that, they're driving all over the place. So it was, I, I would say it was, I mean, I had to go, but I promise you, I wasn't letting my wife and my son drive that day. There was absolutely zero reason anybody should be on the road by Fulton that day. So, my opinion.
Yeah.
Yes, and I agree that it should be left up to each elected officials to keep their office open or not. Like you said, we're in charge of our own offices. But if they choose to open their office and you have employees that come in or that call in, say if they're not coming in, how that, how's that going to be identified? Is that going to be, they're going to have to take sick time or they're going to have to take a vacation time? How would they be able to identify that if an office is going to be open?
Firstly, I had that in my office. I had, we were open and one of the girls didn't feel comfortable driving, her kid was home. She asked if she could take the day off. I said, yes, she used her personal time.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
That's why we had it.
Labor, labor.
We have personal, what?
Labor wise, it should be, labor wise, it should be your vacation time.
Okay, as long as there's clarification, if you call in, you have to use either one or the other. So it goes back to the question, you know, the pay. Is it being paid at time and a half for the employees that came in? For the essential employees, just like my correctional officers and my deputies, they had to work. So are they going to get paid time and a half and the courthouse is closed?
Oh, I don't know that.
Yes, it is.
They, they did, yes.
That's what I'm saying.
If it's open.
No, 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 if there's close, is the essential.
Right, when they give them clothes, your office is up time and a half.
Just wanted clarification on that.
So the public works people.
And correctional officers.
Yes.
But she clearly identified on the payroll courthouse closing, oh, gee.
Yes, okay, just, I think there was some confusion on that, some, so I just wanted to be know, or just want to know from my knowledge and everybody else.
And that's, that's the way we handled it the last time is, you know, you, the department has made the choice and they could take a personal day off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And unless it's like, put the setting inch of ice, I'm going to rule that the department has made their own decision.
And yesterday roads were slick because when I was out, as you had that flash freeze and the highways were, were nothing but ice. But if you drive accordingly.
Literally, it was different in different parts.
Right.
Yeah.
And like I say, if you drive accordingly and normally, you're okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Rely heavily.
I'm not worried about myself, I'm worried about the other guy.
Right. And you know, and Eric, he's been out there for hours and hours and hours, so he can give us a pretty good report on the roads, what they're like, the conditions, the safety, traffic's moving or not moving. So as a chairman, I'm going to have a rely on him and then Shane, of course, is involved with the National Weather Service, et cetera. Gets pretty good advice in those two.
And there's something else to think about. I think there's been a total of maybe four or five days, maybe that the courthouse is closed. I'd have to go back and look and people had to work. So it affects the budget because I didn't schedule time and a half, four or five days of snow days when the courthouse is closed. So that's something to think about or to entertain when doing budgets. You know, we figure in the holiday pay, we figure in everything else. We might want to figure in a snow days and figure those into the budget because we don't figure that in our budget. And so that's something to think about. Kind of look back in history, how many times the courthouse, or if you're going to go down that road to close the courthouse or leave it up to the commission, or leave it up to elected officials, we have to figure in those snow days. So that's time and a half, so it doesn't affect our budgets.
Good idea. We will. Thank you, Bill. Anything else?
Well, no, except for, you know, the, the weather was extreme and the roads were open. So we, we were good. You know, I know that it was very, like I say, you have a flash freeze, it's hard to get material down.
Right. Well, this last storm, I got a completely different report from Eric and Shane than I did the first storm previous to that. So complete different storm, road conditions was different, so we made the decision to leave the courthouse open. And you're right, that halfneck, over time it is expensive. So isn't what you.
Quite a little bit. Block.
Yeah. You know, and I think that's a pretty good resolution, but it's, it's something that doesn't have to happen. The commissioner can change that resolution, but I think it's a good thing right now, so.
I mean, you could, you could leave it up to the department heads whether or not they're going to close their, their areas and just always have it open.
Yeah, that's what we're going to do, that's what I'm going to do in the future unless Eric just tells me, please, Jim, shut her down. It's what happened our first storm. He gave me some good advice and I agreed with him. But if it's a maybe situation, I'm going to open this building up and department head is going to make. But if it's a maybe situation, I'm gonna open this building up, and department heads can make their own decision on if they open up their offices or not, so.
Agreed.
So really, I mean, if we get two offices open, if they're trying to get the public in, the public's not coming anyway to storm.
The other comment I had was, today on the radio, I was talking about our broadband project. You know, and that's, that's something that people are very interested in. And Shane is, Shane is working very hard to get that, that done. Of course, our, our problem is, is we're having problems getting contractors to show up to get this project started.
Well, I was gonna ask Shane to come in and give us an update on.
Well, and the update, we, we talk often on, you know, and we're having trouble getting someone here to take those antennas down.
Yeah, I know.
So the, the update is, until they get here and do that, we're kind of, but we have other things we can buy as.
Where are we at on building the other new towers? Are we going out for bid yet?
Soon as this was done, we're ready to go.
Or get the bid spec ready, send down, et cetera.
He's getting ready to order more towers.
Good.
And like I said, the people, the people in the places that are underserved are excited about it.
Well, we get those, five towers, five towers plus cleanest bigger nut, we gotta have broadband internet.
Well, the other part is, is to put in for, put in for a million-dollar grant, which will go a long ways too. Because, you know, broadband access is economic growth.
It is economic growth, huh? Now, have we submitted that grant yet?
I think we're putting in for it. We haven't approved it yet. But it is, it is broadband, so I'm hopeful.
I think more grants we can utilize, the better off, because those grants are going to some public entity or somewhere, we might as well get our share. And I've asked Eric, and I know he's working with Susan, I believe, to look for grants to do some improvements on Eagle Road, that's our, our previous commissioner.
That's a part, that's a part of, of, yeah, they are very important to get, get as much money we can from the taxpayers, to get it from the other states.
It is.
Nationally.
And that's a pretty important roads, but everything we're doing, I think, is important, so.
Well, all these roads we have, if you look at the overall plan, they're all deemed far from the market.
They are.
Every one of them.
Yeah, every one. And really, Eagle, coming out of Missouri and Garland, them, them farmers right there, that's really a pretty important road, come to sixty-nine highways, so. But I'm looking forward to our road beating, because Eric has expressed a couple of times, and I talked, we talked about in the past when I was the director, is making some of these roads, put up signs, low maintenance, you know. Do we need to be chasing twelve-hundred miles of roads at heart? I mean, not that they're not all important, but if we dedicate some of these as low maintenance, we might not have to blade them quite as often as there's one car here or something.
Are not dedicated, but they are.
Well, I know, it's a tough, it's, and we might not be able to change anything, but I'm glad we're looking at it. I'm glad we're gonna look at.
Well, they got a map right?
Yeah.
I had a map right here. That showed what was low maintenance back in the forties.
Yeah.
You know, so the, the, I'm sure that map has never changed as far as designations.
Yeah, but we've never addressed any of them, low maintenance, you know.
Never.
Well, you had motor grader guys.
So I guess as soon as Laura gets the final on this, we can move forward.
Yeah.
Well, it should be exciting times.
Yeah.
Matt, I can't believe you're so quiet, Matt. I understand sometimes it's better listen, isn't it?
Yep.
Well, do we have anything else?
I, I mean, I think maybe we, we haven't had a meeting at night for quite some time.
Okay.
I don't know if it's even warranted.
I would appreciate seeing you make the effort.
At least we try, see if somebody shows up. I mean, I think we should maybe look at that in the near future. Doing one, if, if we do it here in town, that's fine, or we go to Union Town and do one, or we go, I don't know. Really not much up north. I mean, I guess the Hammond Community Center's there, but. And I don't know what's in Union Town.
There's a Mapleton Community Center.
What's that?
There's a Mapleton Community Center.
But, I mean, if, I mean, I, I just, I think we ought to give it a, at least a, as Ann said, make an effort.
Should we start Union Town March the eighth? That's two weeks. I agree with you, let me see if people get involved, if we come to them, so.
Work for me.
Work for you, Cliff, March eighth?
Yeah.
Start at four o'clock, five o'clock? Be there two or three, couple hours, or?
There's gonna be pushback on the four o'clock then.
Yeah, I think, I think we'd have to do five-thirty at least, at least, if not later.
I'm good with six, whatever you guys wanna do, so.
Very good.
Didn't matter to me.
Me neither.
Start the meeting at six, and, and that should give everyone an opportunity to get off work and come see us, so.
There you go.
Okay.
The morning, you wanna have it out?
Union Town, first one?
So we need to make sure we got City Hall.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I can take care of that. There's a good chance I may not be able to be there if we make it to state basketball.
And you're going to.
I hope so.
Yeah. And we can pick another date.
That's all right. You don't need me there.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we like to.
We'd like for you to be there, so.
So we may have a last-minute change, depending on. But I'll see if it's available that date, and then the following week, I'll make sure, see, see if it's available that date also, so we'll have two dates.
Well, spring break, do you care? I don't know when it is. I didn't know.
It's that, it would be, well, for Fort Scott, it's the, it's the, the seventeenth or whatever that week is.
That's spring break, the seventeenth, March, yeah.
When the city hall's on a table for those dates, you can reach out to the high school, they have the commentary room, or they have the PA system, and the market.
So there's, the eighth will probably work.
Good.
It's just the town hall, if you're correct. Let's just add.
No, it's be our commission meeting.
Be your commission meeting, so.
Better be it.
Okay.
Have an agenda and.
Yeah, have a regular meeting and see if people want to participate. That's what we like.
Won't be televised.
No, won't be televised.
No.
You want Ashley to have this, like, on the radio a few times, so that people know?
Yep.
Or are you still doing the radio shows?
Yeah, I do them on Tuesday, yeah.
So maybe you could just kinda.
I can.
Over the next couple of weeks, let people know.
Okay, good idea.
Give it your all, plug.
That meeting will not be televised, just to make sure we.
Let me know on the, on the City Hall thing, so I can get that on the radio too.
I was told by one of the city commissioners, they're gonna re-schedule another luncheon with us, so I should be coming down, invite and get some dates for that.
They buy it?
Of course.
Yeah.
Susan, would you have the opportunity to check that out for us? Thank you. It's healthy to sit down and visit.
I haven't met the new city manager yet. Have you?
Yes.
Okay.
Matt, you have anything, Matt?
No.
Good news or anything?
Not very many changes, just pretty lookout.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Ashley, I'm begging for permission here.
Okay, entertain most and adjourn, I guess.
Make permission to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, folks, for coming. Ann, Bill, Mr. Crystal. You should have told me that. Okay, I'm gonna cross the street. About to take water, no.
Yeah, well, it's, uh. I'm not, I'm not excited right now. I know that. I didn't like Dunn's job, or, it's, it's not, I'm not.
No, about Sunday night, and then training, eight to five, and then Thursday, eight to four. The only time I've ever gone away from my kids is when I went to his secret for two days for training.
Nice. Nice.
My oldest one, he needs pretty routine, so he's.
So what do they, they get in?
My mom's gonna go over and say, Sunday night with us, because I'll be at the fire station, and Sue's gonna say the other night, he's at the fire station, so. They'll have a good time.
Yeah. See you later. Say what? Basically what? Too cold to walk.
Can I get a seat?
Yes.
This is for the insurance and a hospital bill, totally.
There's one?
Two.